Oh, what's this?
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is May, or June 20th already, wow. Half a year has gone, next thing you know it'll be Christmas. Anyway, welcome, and if you have a cellphone, please turn it off. We'll call this meeting into order and we'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed, Brown, Decker.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor de Vinggo.
Here, thank you. Brown called, didn't hear anything from Lynn. Anybody else? Mayor and councilmembers comments? Counsel, any comments this evening? Yes, Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to announce to our larger community that we have successfully appointed or chosen seven AmeriCorps Vista members and one leader. We are processing, federal government has lots of paperwork online that has to be filled out, I've completed that, we should be having people, those eight people should be in Albion on the weekend of the 9th and 10th to start their pre-service orientation in Albion on the 11th, which will follow, be followed by onsite orientation and training and meeting with folks in the community as part of a larger needs assessment. I welcome comments and I would encourage you all to come to meetings that we will schedule throughout the end of July and into August and into September and continuing as we bring to bear the forces of eight, hopefully 11 by the time we're done, young people as they work to alleviate poverty with us and expand and build capacity in the city of Albion. So I will also say that one of our AmeriCorps Vista members is in the audience, Ms. Danielle Nelson has been working as an intern for the city this year, and she will be working as an AmeriCorps Vista member and finishing out her undergraduate degree at Albion College. Very happy to have her as part of our team. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, we'll move right along. We're gonna start with a public hearing. We have two of them this evening, one is to set the 2016 millage rates and one is Team One Plastic, application for industrial facilities tax exemption certification for a new facility. So we'll start by opening the public meeting with the set the 2016 millage rate. The public meeting is open. City staff will announce the public hearing is open and the public shall offer any comments to the hearing so long as they are not excessive in length. Are there any comments from the audience this evening on the set the 2016 millage rates? See none? The open hearing is closed. Now, Counsel, do you have any questions on the set of the 2016 millage rates? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. In just looking at the summation sheet, it looks like we're increasing our street improvement mills, I'm sorry, water, solid waste, from two to three, and that's the only change?
No, there was one more, wasn't there?
Water is the change.
Water.
Oh, you're right, by, by no six, okay, thank you, thank you.
My question on the solid waste, did that go up a full percent? I thought it, pardon?
Yes, the one mill.
Okay, I thought it was only supposed to go up half.
In the previous council meeting, we discovered that there is a statutory limitation that allowed up to three mills and you had voted to approve moving it to the three, so this is taking that official action.
Was everybody aware of that? Okay, alright, and the water plant debit, debt, what happened there? It's gone from 1.52 to 1.58.
Tommy Finance Director, just to give some clarification on this, the millages that are, that we have to be concerned with are operating type millages, the debt millage, which in this case for the water plant, we can, we have some flexibility in that to set it basically to make sure it covers the debt payment, and with the taxable value inching down, we have to inch up the millage to cover it. It's not really part of the calculation when equalization that the county puts together this truth and lending, or truth and taxation requirement, but we threw it on here so you would have all the millages before you.
Okay, and then down where, in the first paragraph where it says the operating review will increase by minus 6.30%?
Without the...
Pardon?
Yeah, that would be without, if we had not done the, because of our millage, the formula they go through, because of our taxable value going down, had we not bumped up the operating for solid waste by another mill, it would have resulted in a overall calculation of 0.6, or 6.3% decrease.
So was that an error in front of that six? Or is mine the only one?
Oh, I see what you're saying, I know what you're saying.
Is that, is that mine the only one that has a minus on?
Well, no, you're right, and I, we discussed that, I think generally you don't see it decline, because generally you don't see taxable values drop, so it looks kinda funny because it says it will increase by negative six.
Exactly. How do you increase something with a minus?
Right.
That's okay.
We talked about change, this is a, this is verbiage from the county, and we talked about that, we said, I wonder if we should put decrease by 6.0, but we just left it the way it was, so.
So, it's just a, a, a...
It's actually decreasing.
An accounting, an accounting thing, right?
Yeah.
Kinda like auditors.
Double negatives, right?
You're in debt and you're good, you know, and if you're, you're not, so, okay. Exactly.
Alright.
Where you meet, you're an obvious.
Are there any further questions on the 2016 millage rate? If not, thank you very much, Tom. That one is closed. We will go to Team One Plastic, application for industrial tax exemption certificate for a new facility, open to the public. Are there any public statements or anything anybody from the public wants to add to this right now?
Hi, Peggy Cent, President of Albion Economic Development Corporation. Just wanted to review with you briefly what you have in your packet and probably fully understand anyway, but just in case you have some questions. Team One has started a, an expansion to their project or their building and their equipment to the tune of about a million dollars. Two-thirds of that is for equipment and manufacturing machinery, that sort of thing, and about a third is for an expansion of the actual building. The building is complete, the equipment is still coming in, it'll be a little while yet before that is done. They are projecting an increase in employment, and we were looking at some of the employment figures from their last tax abatement application, and at that time they were at about 35 people, I think. Right now they're at 68, I think, and projecting to add another seven, so these abatements are actually helping increase the investment, the jobs, income tax, all that sort of thing in the community, so, once again, it's another good project, it's a company that's been in the bus, in the community for quite a while, they're one of our star graduates from the business incubator, and we're happy to have them, and you are too, and as you can see from your packet, the board rec, my board recommends that you approve this. If anybody has any questions for me?
Thank you, Peggy. If there is no more comments from the audience, I will close that and go to the counsel's Counsel, any questions? Boy. Yep, can't beat my record now, it's already 12 minutes after. Okay, I, I had a question about whether we had to go to the full 12 years, Peggy and I talked about that, and it seems to be, excuse me, the rule of thumb is what they do, she has not got a clarification on that, so this abatement is for 12 years? Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And we've done that in the past, and we still have others that are out there with abatements right now, so we'll just, if we can get a clarification on that, that won't hold our vote up for tonight. So this abatement is for 12 years for Team One, and if there are no questions from, excuse me, from the counsel, I will close the public meeting, and we will move on with the agenda. Thank you. Presentations tonight will be, I don't know why you guys put him on first. The annual audit presentation from April and October, come on.
Well, good evening, thank you for having me. I'm Bill Tucker from Abraham and Gaffney. I'm gonna try to move through this presentation relatively quickly tonight, since I have a normal 15-minute presentation, it'll get a little bit faster for you tonight, so, everybody should have in front of them the two documents I handed out to you tonight, the bound financial statements for December 31st, 2015. This has all the necessary note disclosures, financial statements, our opinion on the financial statements to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and then the second document that we have for you is audit presentation outline. So as I mentioned, I put this together, but I will go, I'll skip a couple of the pages within this document for you as well. Before I get, dig a start, just wanted to give you a kinda brief overview of some of the stuff that we'd be talking about, and start off with thanking Tom, Cheryl, and the rest of the staff for their courtesy and cooperation throughout the audit process, so thank you very much for their hard work. One thing I did want to point out to the counsel before we got started was, this is the first year that we've been doing the audits, so it's probably been 10-plus years we've been doing the audits. First year we do not have any internal control letter comments, so that's a very good positive for the city. We've been reducing those over the year, you know, we probably started off with 20 and been reducing them down, and this is the first year that we had no internal control letter comments, so a very good, clean audit for you in 2015.
Thank you, it was nice for you to show up.
I got about four more minutes. Alright, so the first page I'm gonna turn to...
As you know, it can only get worse from here.
First page I'm gonna turn to is page, Roman numeral number one, the Independence Arts Report. Within the Independence Arts Report, we're providing our opinion on your financial statements. And our opinion is actually located at the top of the second page in the paragraph that's labeled Opinions, in which it states, "In our opinion, based on our audits and reports of other orders, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. That's what we consider to be an unmodified or clean opinion, that's the best opinion you can receive on your financial statements." We're giving that opinion on all 11 opinion units of the city, so every opinion unit of the city that gets that unmodified, clean opinion on the financial statements. So again, the best opinion you can receive on your financial statements. The next paragraphs right down from that relate to the changes in accounting principles. So in 2015, the city implemented Gatsby Statement Number 68. As a result, the financial statements now recognize the city's unfunded or funded defined pension obligation as a liability or asset for the first time. So we'll talk about that, and that's probably the most important thing I want to go over with you tonight, is that net pension asset, because that is very unique, we don't see that in any other governments, I mean, very few other governments in the state of Michigan have a net pension asset, and you're one of those, those cities, so I want to point that out to you because that is a big positive for you. So the first page I'm gonna turn to in the financial statements is page number one of the financial statements, which is the statement of net position. Statement of net position is a snapshot of your assets, deferred outflows of resources, liabilities, deferred inflows of resources, and net position at December 31st, 2015. The main number that I wanted to point out to you on this page is about the 10th or 11th number down from the top, the net pension asset. Total net pension asset December 31st is $8,290,526. As I mentioned before, that is very unusual to have that net pension asset, we've seen communities your size have a liability the opposite way, so $16 million swing there for some other communities, so, very good number. We've seen that stay positive over the last 10 years too, where we look at your unfunded or your funded actuarial crew liabilities, and that's been a positive number, so you guys haven't had to put in as much funding as other communities have over those years, so, very good sign for the city right there. The next two pages I have in the outline for you just relate to both of those pension plans, so pages 55 on the left side and 57 on the right side of the page relate to the, both those pension plans, I just wanted to give you some information on how to read those, because it is a new statement. So the first thing that we look at on the left-hand side is the total pension liability, which is about the seventh number down from the top, of $13,020,000. So that's the total amount of pension liability within MERS that's owed. You guys have investments held with MERS, which is the fifth number up from the top, of $13,772, $772,000, giving you that net pension asset in your MERS plan of $752,000. So a good positive there within your MERS plan, meaning it's about 106% funded, which is the third number up from the bottom. Again, you could look at the, the right side of the page and your Public Safety Officer's Retirement System, those same two numbers, total pension liability, $13 million, assets with the plan of $20,500,000, giving you a net pension asset in that plan of $7.3 million. That one is 156% funded, so. On average, throughout the state, we see plans being 70 to 75% funded, so you guys are, like I mentioned, about a swing of about $7 to $8, which in total will be about $16 million the opposite way. Alright, one last page I really wanted to touch on for you, just 'cause we talk about this kind of percentage every single year, this would be pages three and four of the financial statements, it's the governmental funds balance sheet at December 31st, 2015. The main number that we usually focus on on this page is your total fund balance and your assigned and unassigned fund balances. The far-left column, second number up from the bottom, total general fund fund balance of $1,162,257, with portions that are considered to be non-spendable, leaving you with unassigned and assigned fund balance of $935,475 that is available for expenditures in future periods, so it's the signed and unassigned added together. That dollar amount represents approximately 26.5% of your annual operating expenses, and that is a little bit higher than last year, last year was about 18.4%, so a little bit of increase there from last year. Our recommendation there for your fund balance is a minimum of 15 to 20%, so you guys are above that minimum this year compared to in previous years. So, again, that was pretty quick, I mean, I went through the main points that I would like to point out to the counsel, the really, the big things, like I said, unmodified, clean opinion, no internal control letter comments, and then that net pension asset, which is probably the thing I would talk about to anybody that we want to about that.
Are there any questions? Yes?
I just noticed that if you compare pensions for at least Public Safety, we went from 169% to 156%. That means that we're spending 12% a year, which means that in 10 years it's gonna be gone.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of that would be the actuarial assumptions that they're using, so, you know, they could have, without getting into the details of it, I mean, they could have changed the, the interest rate that they're using, so, I mean, the interest rates have fluctuated as they've kinda looked at those over the last 10 years, the mortality changes, mortality tables are changing for sure, where they, what, depending on what material mortality tables they're using, it was 70 to 72 years of people are living, and now it's 78, 80, 80 years people are leaving, leaving, living, so, those are big impacts that you'll have on your actuarial reports and that total pension liability.
Yeah, I'm just, it turns out there's only, we're contributing $39,000 a year, and we're spending more than a million. I'm just, I'm thinking 10 years down the road.
Right.
And I'm beginning to worry, so, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah.
You would think they'd be thinking 10 years down the road for some of these young guys. You would think some of these young guys would be thinking 10 years down the road. Pay a little bit more, it's the only way it's gonna happen. Is there any more questions? If not, we want to thank you very much for the good news.
You're welcome.
It's been a long time since I've heard any, so, especially from auditors. Thanks a lot for your job.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, Albion District Library update by Cindy Stansak.
And, yeah, Cindy Stansak, I'm the Director of the Albion District Library, I get to see many of you on a regular basis, so hello again. What you have before you are three sheets of paper, they all have basically the same slogan on the top, either get in the game or on your mark, get, set, read. These are the three summer reading programs that actually launched today. Today is the first day, it is a two-month program, so we're running July 20th through August, or I'm sorry, June 20th through August 20th. We have a program for children up through age 12, we have a teen program from 13 to 17, and we have an adult program from 18 and up. And so, the one on top is the adult program, which I thought you might have the most immediate interest in. All of you are eligible, everyone within the service area is eligible to participate, so all residents of the city of Albion, all residents of Albion Township, and all residents of Sheridan Township except those who live within the Marley or the Springport School District areas. So, as I said, it will run from June 20th through August 20th. During that period of time, all of you are, and our children, are invited to read as much as they like of what they like to read. Very often, you know, there's this connotation that the library is, is the school in the summertime, and that's not actually the case. They're very complimentary purposes, but they are separate. The school is for the acquiring of knowledge, the library is to promote a love of learning, which are not in always the same thing, and so, while students, especially in the, in the schools, are encouraged to read this, 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 and this, and they must read these titles, at the library we honestly don't care what you read, as long as you read. Find something you like to read, or ask, and we will help you find something that you want to read. Originally, the purpose of summer reading was actually to prevent summer slide, so students finish one grade level with a certain skill level, and then during the summer those skills begin to recede a little bit, and so the first part of the year, they have to catch all the kids back up again. So the originally, summer reading was to prevent that summer slide and loss of skillset. But, just because you're an adult doesn't mean that you can't be rewarded for reading during the summertime. So, what we have done is that there are a wide selection of prizes, you track the time that you spend reading, and you have tickets that you get to put into the prize drawings of your choice, and at the end of summer, we draw one lucky winner from each canister, and they get to walk away with a prize. And the adults this year, it's everything from an Uno deck to, I have a vintage recreation of a 1956, yeah, 1956 Yahtzee board game, I have law, anybody who's played ladder ball, where you chuck the ball and you have to wrap it around, I've got that too. And so there's the program where you can win prizes, and then there are the events, which are very different. The events are just events that are promoting the program as a whole, and the big one that I want to draw your attention to for the adults is, thanks to a local contact, we have reached out and gained the participation of an, a world doubles champion disc golf player who happens to live in Battle Creek, her name is Ragna Begdi, and she has agreed, and her sponsors have agreed, that she can come and lead a workshop for up to 25 people on our disc golf course in Albion, and not only that, they will actually provide a free prac, a free disc to every participant. So we're very excited about this, it is a registration event, we're also partnering with, because the overarching theme is not necessarily get in the game, it's health and wellness, and get, get in the game is sort of a subcategory, we are also looking, we've partnered with Turtle Dove Holistic Health out of Marshall, and they will be providing a series of workshops on everything from live and raw foods to basic pH and enzyme testing, to Mortis Toe and other mechanical stressors and stress reduction, so those are all registration events as well, there's a small charge to help defray costs, but it's only about $2 per person. So, this is the big thing that's going on. The other piece that I wanted to bring your attention to is, some of you may be aware, the library's millage renewal ends at the end of this year. So we've levied for 10 years, and for us to levy, we will be levying in the winter tax rolls to fill our 2017 budget, but, we do not currently have authorization to levy beyond that. So you will see on the August 2nd primary ballot, the Albion District Library has a millage renewal proposal that is seeking voter approval. Not only did, are we asking for a 2.2, the renewal of the 2.25 mills, based on feedback from the population, from our public, we are also asking for a .25 increase. By law, we could levy up to .5, but we realized that that was really too much, because what we were hearing was, we want you to restore Sunday hours, we had to close on Sundays about a year and a half ago, and, or no, almost two years now, and, we want you to be buying more of the stuff we want. Right now, due to decreasing property values, our revenues, just like the city's, have continued to fall, and so, right now, we're only able to purchase new materials, books, DVDs, children's materials, local history, at about half of what we did five years ago, half. The only reason we've been able to kind of squeak through with the collections that we've developed is some very generous community donors, but we can't rely on that. We really need to meet the need, and what we're hearing is Sunday hours and restoring collection budget. That increase of .25 mills would allow us to, that would cover the funding necessary to do those two things. I am working, this is a draft, I do not have copies available right now, of a brochure, the informational brochure, that will answer any questions anybody has, as well as my contact information in case they have a question that I haven't addressed in here. And so, I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have on either of these two, summer reading or the, the millage renewal. No? Well, at this time, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce you yet again to one of your representatives, the city of Albion, on the library, the district library Board of Trustees. This is Jess Roberts, she's one of three city representatives, and she has a special message for you, something that I cannot say.
Hi, everybody, I'm Jess, and I love my public library. I just wanted to say today that the very prospect of August 2nd fills me with joy, because I think that as a, as an institution, the Albion District Library spends its institutional life giving to our community, and our community has the opportunity on the 2nd of August to give back to the district library so that it can continue its mission in our community. So I just want to encourage everyone to vote yes for the millage, we will be the last thing on the ballot, so start at the back, vote yes, and then come and enjoy the many, many things that are available for you at your district library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any last questions? Yes?
You mentioned that some of the events require registration.
Yes.
How would one do that?
Actually, registration, I, I worked on all the Google forms today, and they will be launched tomorrow, so you will actually be able to log into the website from any internet-capable computer and log right in there. If you are not internet savvy, that is okay, you can call the library and we will sign you up for you. For those events that do require the small materials charge, you would just bring that with you when you show up for the event. Okay? Anything else?
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes, proper decorum is required. Are there any comments on the agenda this evening? See none, we will move on. Consent calendar. Approval of a special council meeting minutes for June 13th, 2016.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions? Voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. It passes. Items for individual discussion. Request approval for 2016 residential cleanup for Saturday, July 23rd, 2016.
So moved.
Moved and supported, are there any questions? It's the same cleanup like we've done?
Yeah.
In the past, so, I think that'll be out.
To Ketchum Field and Harris Field?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
That's on Saturday, July twenty-third.
Yep.
And they'll publ- you'll publicize it in all the typical places?
And I'm sure it's gonna be posted someplace prior to that a couple of times. Okay? If there are no further questions, roll call, or, I'm sorry, voice, vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. There will be a cleanup. E, request approval of resolution twenty sixteen dash thirty-six to set the twenty sixteen tax levy.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. C, request approval of resolution twenty sixteen thirty-eight. Resolution approving application of Team One Plastics for industrial facility tax exemption certif- certificate for a new facility and approval of agreement.
So moved.
Support.
Question? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes. Good job, guys. Uh, D, request approval of resolution twenty sixteen dash forty-one. Approval of memorandum of understanding between the city of Albion and Albion College for the expansion of the Albion River Trail?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions? Yes?
So, this concerns our law enforcement, uh, agency and our use of the law enforcement equipment, and this would be concerned only to critical incidents?
What?
Critical.
This is the river trail.
Oh, I thought.
The river trail.
I'm sorry, I got thrown one. I'm sorry, my mistake.
Okay.
He's ahead of the game.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
No question.
I do it all the time. If there are no further questions. I noticed in the notes that said the college was going to pay for most of it. That scared me, what was left that isn't being paid, or who's paying for it?
Well, some of that is going to be cost assumed by the college as well as in time, which is later.
Okay. What's it cost the city?
Probably some labor in terms of staff time and.
We don't know yet?
We're trying not to have any, there's ongoing, um, grant funding going on, but we're not anticipating anything significant coming to the city.
And if there is, please let us know.
Definitely.
Okay? Okay, if there are no further questions, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kraus?
Oh, yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. E, request approval of Marshall Albion assessing agreement?
So moved.
Questions? Yes?
So, um, we've had, this council has had a number of, uh, conversations with representatives of the assessing office expressing concern about the undervaluing of property and, and how that process is to be managed. And, as I recall, the statement made by, uh, representatives in Marshall were that it was somebody higher up the food chain, as it were, when it came to assessing values of properties. And I'd asked at that time that a presentation be made at some point to help us all understand why it is that, uh, our property values continue to go down in spite of sales that indicate otherwise. So, um, while I will approve this, uh, agreement, I'm concerned that, uh, we're not getting, we're not being helped by, by our assessment team in terms of trying to find resources, through our tax levies.
So, when we get down to future agenda items, I think we need to add that, so that we have somebody come in here and explain that whole process, or at least the, you know,
Right.
clutches of possibly, you know, are, is Albion one of the few that are dropping, and everybody else's is?
Right.
Cool, all right, any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes. Discussion and approval of mutual aid agreement with Eaton Rapids?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, now your question.
In the contract, it specifically talks about our law enforcement and our emergency equipment, so they would come in.
Can I, can I explain real quick?
Yeah, well.
Um, the chief of Eaton Rapids, uh, they have a large fireworks on the Fourth of July. He needed a few extra officers. The Eaton County Sheriff's Department normally provides those officers, but they have another big event going on that day. So, in turn, he requested to borrow three or four of our reserve officers. So, there's actually no cost to this. I spoke with Cullen about this, and he suggested that we put a mutual aid agreement in place just to cover all the possibilities of anything that could occur, so. It's really just for covering their fireworks on the Fourth of July is all this is for.
Would it be a rollover every year we'll do it, or will it come back?
No, i- i- in, hopefully in the future, it'll be the Eaton County Sheriff's Department that does it. It was just a recommendation from the city attorney that we have an agreement for the mutual aid between the two departments, is all.
Oh, 'cause, um, I was welcoming it because I thought that, you know, maybe.
I mean, that doesn't mean we couldn't do something else in the future, but currently, it is really just for this Fourth of July event that they have, so.
Well, I'd like to, um, ask this question because I've been getting some complaints from residents of Precinct One that Calhoun County Sheriff's Department has been pulling them over for not using their signals, and I was wondering, do we have some type of agreement with them?
They have total jurisdiction in the city of Albion, I can, have no control over what they do in the city of Albion, so.
Okay, I can tell them that.
Yeah, yep.
No further questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. G, request approval of the annual audit from Avron and Gaffney?
So moved.
Support.
Questions? Roll ca- yep?
I just wanted to thank Tom and Cheryl. I think this audit indicates what happens when we use new software that's in compliance and, uh, and have a couple of years under our belt, uh, with that software. So, um, thanks again for, it was your, you guys' work that made it happen, so, thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. Future agenda items? Want to put that on there?
Yeah, so if we can request a, um, meeting with, with assessment teams from Marshall and/or Lansing and/or whoever, to help us understand, provide us some data that puts our, the property values in the city of Albion in context with the larger county, and maybe Jackson as well, just to give us some understanding, are we, as, as Mayor Joe said, uh, are we the only community that's decreasing, are we the only one decreasing by this much? What are the metrics being used to assess houses? You know, my house is a perfect example. Houses to the left and right of me sold for excess of ninety thousand, and mine decreased by twenty thousand, so ridiculous numbers, so.
Because you're a councilperson.
I'm quite sure that's it, quite sure that is.
I just thought I'd throw that up there.
Yeah, yeah, well, and then I'm seeing bias or, you know, prejudice, whatever, so.
But, I think we do, I think we need to understand more about our property taxes, so people get the, how does that come about those values?
Right, right.
I do too. Anybody else?
I agree.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Holland Park, Holland Park.
She wants a Holland Park update. She wants to provide, you want to talk?
Yes, I'd like to.
Okay. Yes?
Apparently, I forgot to put the city manager's report on the agenda. I was trying though.
I was trying.
I thought we were on future agendas, we move on.
Why not, it's not on the agenda. I only had one thing for future agenda items unless you can answer tonight. Where are we on the old equipment that we're supposed to be getting ready to get sold?
It's, well, we haven't started the inventory, but that is the plan this summer to start the inventory. In fact, I received a proposal from, from a firm that will do it for you, but I haven't had a chance to evaluate the proposal to see if it makes sense, even look at it.
Okay.
You just gave me another priority at our last meeting. But, going ahead with, um, just some announcements, I wanted to remind you that the Albion Planning Commission is meeting on Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, at seven PM, and they will be considering the, um, special use permit and the site plan review relative to the Albion Downtown Hotel. There will also be an update on the comprehensive plan, as well as an update on the citizen engagement and community forums, which will be provided by Daniel Nelson. And Daniel, can you come up for just a moment and just speak to the, um, the housing community workshop?
Hello. So, the housing community workshop will be on June twenty-ninth at six PM to seven PM at ten fifteen Erwin Ave, which is Karen Community Wesleyan Church. And the point of this workshop, there's, um, some flyers here that I can hand out to, uh, or if you'd like to grab them after the meeting. Basically, the main focus of it will be presenting the housing target, target market analysis and what that means to the city, which basically it tells us that there are a certain number of people that are hoping to move into this general region by 2020, and how we can try to capture that market, um, in terms of improving our housing stock. In addition to that, we're going to have, um, a couple of residents who are going to present on some of the residential developments that have been going on in the city, including the downtown. And also, we will have resources available to residents and developers. We're also looking at inviting a number of developers so that they can, um, see what is available from the USDA, um, the MEDC, as well as the land bank and our local banks in the community as to what resources, resources are available so that they can reinvest in their properties. And so, and the other main focus of this will be to discuss what the vision for Albion's neighborhoods are as it relates to the comprehensive plan, so that the planning commission can create a more meaningful document, especially in regards to housing and what we would like to see in the future. And so, that is basically the gist of it, and are there any questions?
Yes.
Has the, uh, planning commission updated the comprehensive plan in the last three or four years?
No, we're updating it currently this year, and it's done every ten years, um, according to state law.
Okay, um, when I was on commission, they were talking about doing it, but it was kind of just laying on the shelf with the forms to the manager. I mean, uh, some of that stuff is from the sixties.
Correct, we're, um, I believe that there was an update done in two thousand.
They started.
Is when it started, and, um, and now we're actually working with a consultant who recently retired from the MEDC, and she's helping to really move this process forward, and that's been one of my main tasks this summer as well. Um, and so, and in regards to that, I've been putting together these community workshops so that we can gather more citizen input, um, so that the planning commission actually has something to work off of instead of trying to kind of, uh, work on this plan in a vacuum. And so, and so with that, we're actually, we're making some great strides with it, and we're hoping to have it finished by the end of the year, and.
So, in conjunction with what you're doing,
Yes.
the planning commission will give us a report?
That would be up to the planning commission, but from what I assume, yes, there will be, and, um, and I assume that there will be a report from our, the consultant that we're working with, Rosalyn Jones. And I assume that she'll be presenting to city council within the next couple of months, so. Absolutely. Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, um, our Blue Cross coverage is have, is adding an additional feature. There will be twenty-four hours, seven-day-a-week access to a healthcare professional for consultations, um, by your phone or computer. It will have the standard office visit fee of forty-nine dollars. The information will be included in the payroll envelopes for all of the employees, and there will be an informational forum on June twenty-eighth at seven-thirty AM or at five o'clock PM for any employees or their spouses, if they would like to get more additional information in regards to this new feature. And you have on your desk, um, there will be on Wednesday, June twenty-ninth, the welcoming, um, for Tim Kraus, the new director for the Albion Community Foundation from four to six PM at the Albion College President's House. And on the other side is the retirement party for Nidio Wolf, who's retiring from the Albion Healthcare Alliance, and that's going to be on Monday, the twenty-seventh, from three to five PM at the medical building. And then, on Thursday, June thirtieth, there is the Cruisin' and Car Show, which will be from five to nine PM on the, um, on Superior Street. So, we're always excited to see that event as well.
Easy agenda.
Don't we have a meeting next Monday?
Yes, we do.
Workshop? What time is that?
That's six-thirty, Jill.
Okay. What do you got, Andy?
That's the latex paint recycling day, which is, I guess, the same day as.
Yes, the tires, the recycling, and the paint are all that same day.
Okay. And, our recycling center is begging for help?
Yes. Yes, they need volunteers. I'll be there Saturday, so you know they're desperate.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on. Motion to excuse absent councilmember Garrett Brown. He did notify me that he was ill this evening.
So.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. He's excused. Citizens' comments, people addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes. Property decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments this evening? Please come forward with your name and address. Hurry up.
Say no, quit, shut it off, shut it off, quit.
Just a couple of things tonight. Mike Bearman, one-one-oh-one-six-twenty-nine, Mowrath County Commissioner. Wanted to say, congratulations to Team One Plastics, that's tremendous. Also, in the area, Bramble is starting up their foundry, and, um, they've been working their, their ovens. And we've got some other things, Albion College is, um, Equestrian Centers, about half up. If you haven't seen that yet, it's amazing building. Just, and what Daniel, um, was talking about with the community. We've got to have places for our people to move in, because we've got a lot of jobs coming to this area. I'm on the area agents, I'm, I'm on the workforce development committee, um, board out of, um, for the, four counties, and we're looking at all of the different jobs that are coming to this area. And like within thirty miles of Albion, thirty-five miles of Albion, you're going to end up with over a thousand jobs in the next three years. So, we've got to be able to be ready to take these people in and give them a good home at a reasonable price, because there's a lot of other places that, that we'll be competing against. And, also want to talk about trailways. I'm, I'm on the Trailway Alliance also, and I really want to commend Albion's, um, step up to put in the trails. Those trails are going to be absolutely great. We have to start looking at alternate, um, means of transportation throughout the county, because this is the way we're going to get the youth back to our towns. The youth have a tendency to want trails and want bicycle, um, means of transportation. There's, there's a lot of the youth that are, don't even get driver's licenses anymore. They're looking for public transportation and/or alternate transportation. So, we have to be right on top of all of that, and I'm gonna walk the twelve-mile challenge from Albion to Marshall on the thirtieth.
All right.
So, thank you.
Fred Carroll, Team One Plastics, we would like to thank the city for your support again. As everyone knows, uh, we wouldn't be here without the continued support of the city, and it's been a great partnership, and we look forward to continuing to grow, and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're doing a super job out there. One of the only places I know you can walk in in shorts and tennis shoes, and you're looking at computers all around you, and it's still a hundred degrees in there. But, uh, it's a fine facility, you guys have come a long ways, so. If there is no further, let me make one comment on these trails. You know, they're a good thing. It, it's kind of like everything else, we put the money out there to do them, but nobody puts the money back in them to keep them the way they're supposed to be. So, we have to find a way to continue these things that we're bringing, you know, for people to use. We've got to figure out a way to support maintaining these things. So, as they bring these new things, we need to figure out how we're going to keep them up and, and, and nice like they are supposed to be, so. Okay? All right. Any other questions? If not, may I have a adjournment, please?
So moved. So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Thank you all very much this evening. Make sure you take your audit books home and read them.